Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Sheila, could you give us a roll call, please?
Mr. Young. Mr. Furman.
President.
Dr. Hans. Dr. Hans notified me that she is currently en route. Mr. Lansman. Ms. Newman. Ms. Namie Dyer. She's also currently en route. Mr. Cowan.
President.
Ms. Root, here. Dr. Tob. Ms. May, here. Ms. Woodruff.
Here.
Mr. Torres. Mr. Torres notified that he was not going to make it in the meeting.
Thank you. And now we need a vote to approve the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved. I need a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the agenda for tonight. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is our first opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone signed up?
We do not have any public comment in the online chat. We don't have any... There is a attendee in the room, but it's... We'd like to wait till the end of the meeting. The second opportunity for public comment.
Thank you, Suzanne.
You're welcome.
Okay. Staffing announcements?
Good evening. Dana Lassenby, CEO. I just wanted to announce... Well, I have two exciting announcements. The first is our new COO, Chief Operating Officer, Adam Genovai. He comes to us through McComb County and then also some work in the managed care arena in Detroit Wayne. So happy to have him on board so you guys can ask him questions, put him on the spot. He's pretty good. So I wanted to just seriously welcome him to Oakland Community Health Network and introduce him to this board.
Would you like to have words? Yes.
I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Oakland County.
The second announcement is another one that we're excited about to announce. Ms. Christine Burke is our new Chief of Staff as of September 6th. So we want to congratulate her and all of her work and dedication. And she's going to keep us getting the work done. So please join me in congratulating Ms. Burke. And that's all I have for now.
Ms. Burke, would you like to make any comments?
Thanks, Burke. Hi. I just want to say thank you to Dana and to really everybody on the staff because you're only as successful as the people around you. We have a great team, so I appreciate the opportunity. A little excited, a little nervous all at once.
You'll do fine. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
For Dana, so do we need new comms person or is that rolled into the Chief of Staff? Or how is that working?
That position will be posted.
Okay.
Yes, we're going to backfill the position. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. And I heard that the Chief of Staff gets some boxing gloves, so good luck.
I think she's been wearing them for a while.
I always have said that the Chief of Staff has one mission, to get things done. So good luck in your mission.
Now it's time for Finance Operations Committee. Turn it over to you.
Okay. So I didn't realize the full impact of being the Treasurer now. I get the Finance Committee, but in any event, thank you. So the first item that we have is appointment of a Vice Chair. So does anyone with the members of the old Business Operations Committee, which is now Finance, are John Young, Adam Furman, Rena Namie Dyer, myself, and John Paul Torres. So I think we have four members. So I can't be the Chair and the Vice Chair, so I'll have to ask for a nomination or a volunteer to be Vice Chair. Okay. So do we have a nomination of... Is there any other nominations or considerations? There being none, could someone nominate and second, Mr. Young?
I nominate, Mr. Young.
Second.
Thank you very much. There being no other nominations, I'll ask for a vote of the Finance Committee. Do we need a roll call or how do you want to do it? Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You are duly appointed. Congratulations. You'll have the list from the Finance Chairman shortly. All right. Next, I believe we have Budget Amendment Three and corresponding explanation from Anya.
Good afternoon. I have one of my staff with me, Laura Aaron. She is very involved in both the amendment preparation and the BA... Or I'm sorry, the annual budget preparation. So she's going to help me with any details that I don't have right on the tip of my tongue. You have Budget Amendment Three in your packet.
Whoever is doing slides, is that Suzanne?
Okay, good thing I brought it up with me because I can't read that. Okay, so Budget Amendment Three. If you can see that hopefully. So we didn't make any major adjustments to revenue. So at this point in the year, what we're doing is really just kind of adjusting expenses to where we actually plan for them to be. So Medicaid revenue didn't really change. We expect that to be relatively close to where we expect to land. General Fund, we did make a couple of adjustments. We had an extra general fund payment that came through of about $390,000. The state just had some extra general fund, so they pushed it through to us. We never did receive the $10,000 in categorical that we had originally budgeted for. Those things can be temporary. They just... And I believe it was targeted specifically to a particular population, so it just wasn't included in our general fund allocation this year. In addition to that, what you're seeing for County Match is some of the Co-Responder and Mental Health Navigator Funds. But as I was just finalizing this, I did notice we've got it duplicated in here lower in one section. So I'll update that before you guys approve it, just so it'll be correct in the final document. We fixed it on 23, but it's not correct here. So moving down to Other Revenue. The Other Revenue Grants, primarily that adjustment there is going to be the grant that we received as retention payments for ACT, staff that provide ACT services. So the department had grant money that they decided to send out for the staff that provide ACT services. And I believe that was consistent across the state. We were essentially just the pass-through. So that's the primary adjustment in that number. And then again, those Oakland County dollars for the school mental health navigators and the co-responders, the grant section is actually the correct section for them to be in there as well. So SUD Other, you see that slight decrease. That's PA2 money that decreased. PA2 money, we budget and estimate. It's convention and liquor tax. So that's actually just adjusting to the actual revenue we did receive this fiscal year. The Behavioral Health Case Rate, so you can see that went up pretty significantly from what we had originally budgeted, and that's just due to enrollment. So the revenue increase will also equal the expense increase you'll see below. And then finally down there on CCBHC, you'll see we added an additional $4 million. So that CCBHC line there represents the supplemental payment of the CCBHC revenue. I could go into hours of detail on CCBHC revenue and expense. I will not bore you with that. But that is just an increase in the supplemental expense we've... Supplemental revenue we expect to get for this fiscal year. Moving down to Expenses. We made no adjustment to Administration. Looking at ABA, we did increase ABA by about $1.5 million. We're seeing an increase in the number of people served. We added providers and we're also seeing additional individuals. The Core Provider Adults Line, the increase there is a couple of things. We moved up the CCBHC line that was below, as well as the Provider Retention Payment, are all now included in the actual population categories that you see there. So that impacts both Core Provider Adults and Core Provider Kids. So you see those going up and those are just us getting those to the estimates we expect to be at for the end of the year. Crisis and Acute Care Services, we did increase that by about $2 million. That's because our hospital expense has gone up again this year. So that will be one of our focuses for fiscal year '23. It's going to be to look at acute care services and hospitalizations and look at some different ways of possibly managing that expense. Core Provider Kids, as I mentioned, is related to CCBHC. Housing Services is actually a decrease. And the reason that is, is because now that we have separated rent from the actual per diem that is paid to residential providers, we have gotten to where we are collecting rent on a far more consistent basis, based on an individual's social security income that's supposed to be used to collect rent. So there's a lot of separating we had to do with that. Now we're collecting it at a pretty good rate and therefore we're able to reduce the expense we actually have to cover ourselves. Purchase Service... I'm sorry, Grants. So Grants is going to match the increase to the Grant Revenue. So it's the same Co-Responder and Mental Health Navigator adjustments that I mentioned before. Purchase Service Other is specific to an increase we had in the jail contracts, so the services that are provided in the jail. Dropping down to Vocational. So Vocational Services still have not picked up to pre-pandemic levels. I'm not sure if and when we will get back to pre-pandemic levels, but we're in the process of putting together a survey with the Provider Network team to really understand what's happening there so that we can better understand. Is it transportation? Is it just a lack of desire for people to go back? Or really what's happening with Vocational Services? Because we are not seeing it come back at the level it was. Residential Services did increase. We have it increased by about another $1 million. And that's really just the amount of overtime we're seeing is pretty significant even compared to last year. And so we're seeing a fairly big increase in those expenses. Again, if people aren't going to Vocational Services, they have to provide more staff in residential services. So that expense is just continuing to go up. If you look at that next CCBHC line where I mentioned that it had gone up before, so that's why you see us subtracting it there in that line. Provider Training is reduced to be what we actually project to spend this fiscal year. And then again, the Provider Retention Payment is now moved up into the Provider Expense areas. All of that said, gets us to a change in net assets of $4.2. But as I mentioned, there's that slight duplication of those county funds that we'll fix before you approve it next week. So we'll be closer to $4 million. What questions do you have?
It sounds like overall you're...
A little bit.
Are you blinded by the light? That comes with the Treasurer role. No, I'm only kidding. It sounds like we're just having catch-up with the real expenditures and revenues based on the fact that we're almost at the end of the fiscal year.
Yep.
Okay, so that's good. And then second, will we end up... Where will we end up visa budget by the end of the fiscal year?
So we should... So these numbers are adjusting our budgets to get to where we think we're going to land. So we should land pretty close to these numbers. And then basically, net assets, change in net assets of about $4 million. So that's an estimate that doesn't include things like the provider cost settlements that still have to be worked out. So that may change a little, but that's roughly where we would expect to be.
And that's $4 million to the good?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought, but just to make sure the public knows that we're on the good side.
Yeah, don't hold me to those numbers just yet. But yes, so that's the projection. So this document now... I'm sorry, did anybody have any other questions before I...
So this document that you're looking at now is really just the fund source information of that. So as you guys know, we have multiple fund sources, some of which can be commingled, some of which cannot. So what you're looking at there at the top there is the Medicaid Fund Sources. So you can see we're roughly break even on the Medicaid Fund Sources. It's about $200,000 to the negative, but in a several hundred million dollar budget, that's not much. Moving down to the Other Mental Health, that's going to be our General Fund, Local Grants, Non-MDHHS, which is basically the money we fund to honor community health, our Behavioral Health Home Grant, and CCBHC. So if you combine all of those, which you actually can't totally combine all of those, but if you were to do that, it would be a surplus of about $1.6. So you can see that surplus of that $4 million is not coming from Medicaid. It's really coming from our local funds and our SUD funding. So that next section you see there is specific to SUD funding, primarily PA2 money, which is that convention and liquor tax that I mentioned. So the bulk of that section there is that $3.7 million. We also use some of that to cover our block grant losses. So we do spend more in basically the SUD equivalent of General Fund. So we use some of that PA2 money to cover those expenses. So the remainder of that surplus is actually PA2 money, that $1.8 million. So any surplus we have is not related to Medicaid. It's specifically local money from the county and from PA2 money.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Young?
You kind of said it fast, so maybe you could roll back. The Honor Health is just with SUD or...
Nope. So Honor Community Health is the FQHC that we help support locations that are... I believe it's either three or four co-located sites. I can't remember off the top of my head. And they have another location, I believe, in Pontiac General. So they provide physical health care in those locations.
So it's just the physical health side or both?
Well, they specifically are typically... And after you say typically, it's physical health care. They do have some funding for, I believe, some light mental health services, not to the depth of what someone in our system might necessarily be utilizing. But I think they have maybe a case manager off the top of my head.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And maybe some doc time, a little.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Don't go because we've got the budget presentation.
Yep.
But I will have to ask members of the committee for a motion to approve Budget Amendment Three for this fiscal year.
Moved.
A motion by Mr. Young? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. We're recommending it, yes. Yeah, all of the things we'll be doing at this meeting will be recommendations. You're absolutely correct. Thanks for the reminder. So for a recommendation to the board, we have a motion. Is there support?
Support.
I support. Is there any discussion? No.
You got it, no.
So we'll have the vote, please.
Ms. Namie Dyer? Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Next, the final budget for the next fiscal year?
So we have our first glance at the fiscal year '23 budget. So I'm going to caveat this to begin with, with we don't have final rates yet. So we had... We got draft rates back in July. Yeah, July. I know they have made changes since then. So what you're looking at here is our best estimate, our best conservative estimate right now. So I think I mentioned before, the eligibility trend they used in the fiscal year '23 rates was 6.3%, meaning they think that there will be an additional 6.3% added to the already enrolled in Medicaid population. Personally, I don't think that's possible. I don't think there's that many people left, just given the number of people we have seen on Add to Medicaid over the last two years and that based on our data, which you guys see when I give you the financials, our eligibility trend is flattening out. So I'm not comfortable with projecting revenue at that rate. So what we did was we took those rates that they used that are reduced because of that 6% increase, and we only trended it at 2%. So it's a conservative look at what we think revenue might be for fiscal year '23. What I will say is in addition to that, we have gotten information that they did reduce that slightly, which will make our rates increase. So again, that just goes to an additional... This is a conservative estimate. So what you're looking at here as far as revenue, I would be comfortable with saying is a bare minimum. We do expect it to be better than this, but until we get those actual rate sales in, it's very hard for us to project and let alone, you know, it's always variable just based on the number of people that are on Medicaid. So we can project better once we have final rates, but then it's always up to the number of people who are actually enrolled in Medicaid at the time. So these are conservative. I do expect it to be better. If it's materially different when we get the rates, we'll immediately do an amendment to adjust it. If it's not hugely material, I'll probably wait till first quarter like I normally would, but it's just going to depend on what they look like. So all that to say, I have a projected increase to Medicaid of about $3 million here. So that's about $3 million over last year. So the way this is structured is you can see the Budget Amendment Three that we just went over, what you can see in that change column is now the adjustments from BA3 to the initial fiscal year '23 budget. So you can see some pretty material swings in the categories because that's how they adjusted the rates. So Healthy Michigan went down pretty drastically, and that's really just because there are so many people on Healthy Michigan right now, they reduce the rate. But you can see Medicaid Specialty has gone up a bit. Again, that has to do with that eligibility trend. So all of those things netted together are going to be that $3 million. Dropping down to General Fund, so that's this negative 876 is putting us back to our just standard General Fund allocation for the year. So that's excluding any other, like the random payments we had gotten in fiscal year '22. So that's just our GF allocation now is $10.8 million. County Match, so this is the corrected version of what I mentioned was incorrect on the last amendment. So this is the County Funds as well as the Co-Responder Funding. I believe that's in this line as well. Laura's helping me by shaking her head, so that's correct. So that's a slight increase to the County Match dollars. So then jumping down to Other, you can see over revenue stays the same. Grant revenue does change slightly because you can see what's going on in there is the SOAR revenue. So SOAR is on SUD grants. And primarily, that's the adjustment in the grants there. So then dropping down to CCBHC, it looks like we did flat for now. Again, a lot of that is going to be us just getting more experience with CCBHC and understand how the department is really going to reconcile that in fiscal year '22 because we don't actually have that in writing yet. And also understanding how that plays out starting for fiscal year '23. I don't believe there's any adjustments to the rate, but a lot of this stuff is still being worked out and the detail hasn't been finalized yet. So just expect to see some changes as we get through this now second year of CCBHC. So that puts us at total revenue in Other of three points... I'm sorry. Total revenue overall is $442 million. So then if we move to Expenses. So Expenses, so you can see Administration here. So Administration has an increase. That's primarily related to the annualization of the physicians added in fiscal year '22. The second year implementation of our Compensation Analysis. So if you remember, we talked about that that was a two to three-year implementation. So what you're seeing in this number is the second year implementation of that and then just the standard general increase that we typically budget for staff. Moving down to ABA expenses, so you remember in BA3, we added $1.5 million. So we're going to add another half a million here because again, with additional providers, we do expect to be able to serve additional individuals. Core Provider Adults, slight increase. That's like barely even worth noting there. Again, I do think that we'll continue to see that change throughout fiscal year '23 because of CCBHC and how many people end up enrolled in CCBHC. Sorry about that. So that will fluctuate with that. But given it's so new, we're just projecting kind of as we're learning. Crisis and Acute Care, we did add some money to there again, again with the hospitalization. As I mentioned, our goal is to look at and potentially restructure how we're paying for that and how we're authorizing it. But as of right now, we do still expect a bit of an increase over fiscal year '22. So then dropping down to, let's see. Bear with me. My numbers are small even in front of me. So I have an increase to Housing Services, I believe, if I'm lining it up correctly here. So that's just a slight increase in Housing Services. I believe that one is related to... I'm looking at Laura to hopefully help me. It's... See it? Oh, is it? Is that why I'm struggling? Okay. So I'm going to actually... I don't remember what that one is, so I'm going to look at it real quick. I'll go back to that one, Laura, if you don't mind looking up what that is because I don't remember off the top of my head. Purchase Service Other... Look, I'm sorry, I'm jumping down too far. I'm showing that lineup, the 117 I'm showing lineup with Housing. And then SUD is the 767. Okay. So the 767 being SUD, which I believe is the SOAR grant. But the housing one is what's throwing me. So Grants, again, Grants are related to those county grants that I had mentioned in Revenue Above. Purchase Service Other has dropped slightly, so that category is one that's just kind of the collect-all for the non-core provider type expenses. So just a slight adjustment to reduce that line. Claims and Use Tax is specifically tied to revenue, so it's a percentage. So anytime we have additional revenue, we have additional taxes. And then jumping down to Behavioral Health Case Rate, I'm sorry, that's Residential. So we are adding an additional $1 million to Residential. So once we find out how fiscal year '22 really lands at the end, we'll have a better understanding of where we're falling with Residential. If you recall, Residential is one of the two actual networks, two, maybe three networks that are still on cost reimbursement. And that's really not only really related to COVID, but really just a staffing crisis. They're still in... I don't even know if there's a word bigger than crisis. But they're still having major issues with staffing, so that means they're paying a ton of overtime for the staff that they have. So we do expect those expenses to continue to rise, at which point we are able to remove them from cost reimbursement. Certainly we will. But we just don't feel like at this point that we can do that. Given how the funding structure is set up, it doesn't allow for them to manage that risk very well. So right now, it's better if they stay on a cost-reimbursed model and we cover and make sure they have funding to cover the staffing and the associated overtime that is required. So you can see down there that that results in total expenses of $440 million, which leaves us with a change in net assets of about $2 million. Again, my revenue is very conservative, so I expect if anything, that to go up. But again, until we have that in writing and we're able to do a little better job projecting, we went on the conservative end of that. Ah, Housing is repairs and maintenance, see? So one of the items in our housing contract is repairs and maintenance on group homes that we own and/or lease through CHN. So there's a general schedule of repairs and maintenance that goes on. So with the pandemic and everything like that, we've reduced that number of how much is going on. So it's just an adjustment.
When do you think we will have information, some of the information you spoke about with respect to having more definition to the budget?
To the rates? So we were supposed to get it today. As of now, I don't see it in my inbox. So that's why, you know, at this point, I can't update it fast enough to get it to you anyway. So what I'll probably do, like I said, if it's material, we'll... we'll turn around and do an amendment really quick just on revenue. If it's not material, we probably will wait.
Well, we won't entertain this officially until next week at the board meeting, so.
Yeah, even if I have it by then, I'm not sure if we'll have enough time to do the projections. We'll see. Certainly if we can, and that's the board's preference, we can attempt that, but then recognize that I would be updating it from what you're seeing now.
And I, for my part, I appreciate the fact you're taking a conservative approach. I'd rather be pleasantly surprised than being a whole surprise.
It's always easier for me to tell you we have more money than it is for me to tell you we have less.
Yes, that's a good policy.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Anyone on the board or on the committee that have any questions? Okay.
I have one. Under expenses, purchase of services other. Could you give an example of what that would be?
Yeah, we'll just give you the exact, that's why we brought computers up here. It's easier because there's so much in there.
Thank you.
So the exact expense that's being adjusted there is that was a holding place for the Oxford Mental Health Benefit. So if you recall, that was one of the county programs. So that's a reduction in that because part of that hit in fiscal year '22 as opposed to fiscal year '23. So it's just separating those two things out. But just to give you an example, some of the other things that are housed in that particular category, services in the jail, our MRS cash match agreement, Freedom Road. We fund Freedom Road for transportation. So just different miscellaneous contracts that go in there that don't fit nicely into one of the other categories, it's kind of the collect-all for that kind of stuff. What else? Anybody else?
Anyone else?
Jonathan, did you want me to start over?
No.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentation and all the hard work. I know putting together a budget is an arduous task, especially when you don't have all the information but in details that you need, but we'll look forward to those in the future. So at this time, if on the committee, if we could have a motion in support to make a recommendation for adoption of the '23 fiscal year budget?
So moved.
A motion?
Seconded.
And supported. So can we have the, any discussion on that? There being none, could we have a vote?
Can I clarify the motion? Because Anya's going to adjust some of the numbers.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Right.
So with a possible amendment, is that what the motion is?
Well, yes. The motion would be for a recommendation of adoption of the budget as proposed with amendments that may come before the meeting. Before the full board meeting.
Okay. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I just want to add that the public should know this is a balanced budget. Actually, we have a slight surplus that's built into it. And it is an increase from last year, but I wouldn't say it's a significant increase and just follows the, we're just following the revenue and following the expenses. Okay, thank you. All right, you're off the hot seat.
Well, maybe, I don't know what's next. I might be covering for Patrick, so. I don't know what's one, is Patrick next, Sheila?
Next, we have the, we have five contracts that need to be reviewed and recommendations made. First is the MCET contract. Marquita Massey and Wendy Schiller are going to present. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Wendy Schiller. I'm the manager of quality improvement. And we're seeking approval for a contract with Michigan Consumer Evaluation Team, or MSAT. MSAT conducts surveys on behalf of OCHN. And we've contracted with MSAT to develop and administer surveys since 2003. So it's been a long relationship with them. So this is a three-year term contract with a total amount of $90,000. And the statement of work for fiscal year '23 includes three surveys. So they will be administering the access experience survey, the telemedicine experience survey, and the complex case management survey. So these surveys are administered to the people we serve by their peers. And we use the results to identify different service areas that are in need of improvement or to identify gaps in service. Does anyone have questions about this contract?
I have two questions. One, are there other vendors for this service? And secondly, are there any credentialing requirements for these vendors?
This year, we are investigating and researching a new vendor that we would like to work with. We are looking at some NCQA certified vendors to administer our Experience of Care and Health Outcome Survey. Some of the feedback that the board gave us last year was that we really need to expand the number of surveys that we administer. So we are looking into that, and there has been a slight reduction in the budget for MSAT for that reason. It just allows us to expand the number of vendors and hopefully the number of surveys that we can administer.
I have a follow-up, and this is probably for leadership, that if we could get a follow-up as to how our search is going for credentialed vendors for this service. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Just to clarify, the $90,000 is for the total three years or is that per year?
Yes, it's $30,000 per year.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, I see that previously it was $75,000 for one year. Obviously, that's a huge reduction, which is great, but what is, why is there such a huge reduction?
It is because of that Experience of Care and Health Outcome Survey. So that is our primary experience survey that we administer. So they had been administering that for us. They had limited capacity for how many they could administer. And some of these certified vendors also will provide us with some additional resources. They can do benchmarking with other health plans that they work with. And they give us bi-weekly updates, and there are some additional services that they can provide.
Yes. So when we're looking for other survey vendors, are we looking at an RFP or we're just going to do a, just a normal go-to-market and solicit on, get unsolicited bids from them? What's our approach?
That is something that we need to discuss with our contracts department to find out how we need to proceed. Right now, we are really just gathering information. We're getting proposals from the certified vendors. There's a pretty limited number of vendors that NCQA has certified. So we're pursuing those and getting all the quotes first, and then we have to discuss how we have to proceed with that.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I know we had an extensive presentation from MSAT before, but I can't remember, do we, do the people that they survey give any feedback to OCHN, how MSAT is doing when they're providing the survey? Like customer satisfaction with what they do?
We have not received that, no. The only thing we may receive is some comments, you know, if somebody was not happy with the way that it was administered, we might receive just some comments from our providers, but nothing formal.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Would it have been possible to do a one- or two-year contract? Since that seems like it should be enough time to find a different vendor if we would have decided on one?
We intend to continue the relationship with MSAT. You know, we want to use them for some of the surveys in some manner. It is a benefit to really work with some peers and have them do surveys because then we get a real candid response. And we do, you know, like the fact that we can employ people in this way as well. So we want to continue that relationship. But just each year, we evaluate, you know, to what extent we'll be using that vendor.
Just to be clear, this contract for 90K is just for these three surveys, not for the whole number? Because we've done more surveys in the past with them. So we're choosing to just do these three. We're looking perhaps to go to someone else for the other ones.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity. Yes.
In my reading and what I have read in the medical literature recently, in terms of the public, I mean, it was in the news, I think, a week ago that there is going to be a major reshuffle of the CDC. And I think CMS is also looking into how the database is created for public health and future services. So I think it's very important that our surveys are robust, they are credentialed, and I think we should be doing a robust research as well because this is coming. I feel a little bit hesitant about this three-year contract. I agree that it is important to have a relationship with our clients, the peers, and they should be part of this process. But I can, I think we can utilize those inputs internally. So that's what I am a little bit concerned about.
As Wendy mentioned, our intent is to look for a certified vendor that can help us with the ECHO survey. And our belief is that all your concerns that you expressed, the vendor that we end up settling on will be able to address all these things.
Anyone else? Thank you. And for my part, if with respect to the other vendors that you may be looking at, I would encourage that you use the RFP process because especially when it's a new contract, I think hopefully you'll get more robust bids. So just think about that. I'm not sure exactly what our contractual department will require, but I'm always one, especially on a new contract, that likes to see an RFP and open process. All right. If there's no further discussion, then do, from the members of the committee, do I have a motion on a recommendation for the MSAT contract to the board?
Motion to move the MSAT contract to the board for the general board meeting?
Motion.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? There being none, the vote please.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Marquita, thank you for staying. And so this is with respect to the Medfressant contract?
Yes.
Go forward, please.
I am here to speak to the board about extending our contract with Medfressant. Medfressant is a NCQA certified credentialing verification organization. We initially began contracting with Medfressant in October of last year. We used all of last year, probably about six months, ramping up all the setup that needs to happen with credentialing, setting up a credentialing process, which included developing client rules and understanding all the tentacles of Medfressant. For fiscal year '23, our intent is to expand our use of Medfressant to more providers in our network. In FY '22, we started out with just our SUD providers, ABA, and our OCHN staff. From our recent NCQA review, the files that we had that were prepared by Medfressant, the review went very smoothly. Primarily that's because there's, when you're using a CVO, you have a consistent credentialing application, you have a consistent process for primary source verifications, and you have an orderly file that once the NCQA reviewer was able to review one of the files from Medfressant, the remaining files were able to pass automatically without any extensive review because they had the safeguard that the file had been prepared by an NCQA certified organization. So and as I mentioned, this coming fiscal year, we are hoping, we are planning to expand use of Medfressant to other providers in our network. That will result in a cost increase, and we are seeking a board approval for this contract amount. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Yes.
Just for clarification, what exactly do they provide for us?
Well, when a practitioner is hired, basically a clinician, what Medfressant does is they do all the primary source verification. So they check the education of the individual from the primary source. They check that the individual has a valid license. They check the work history. They ensure that there is adequate liability insurance, and then they also do the background checks.
Yes, sir. So that includes also checking to make sure they're not sanctioned?
That includes also that they are not sanctioned and that they're eligible for participation in federal-funded programs. And then Medfressant also does the ongoing credentialing to make sure that the practitioner maintains a license and that they remain sanction-free.
So we're looking at extending that use. Are we looking at taking it all the way down to almost anyone in our, you know, in our direct provider network? And so then we can, as an extension, if someone's not doing a good job in one, as an employee of one organization, we would potentially know it so there would be a challenge for them to get hired by another organization.
Well, what we would know is if a provider had an issue with Laura, the licensing authority, or if they were sanctioned, Medfressant would tell us that. At this time, we are not looking to expand it to every provider type in the organization. That may come eventually, especially with the universal credentialing process that the state is implementing. And what that is, is that the state is developing a process where all organizations and individuals in the state of Michigan are credentialed through this same process. And what that means is if I'm a practitioner and I work at Oakland, but also I'm doing contract work with Detroit Wayne, I only have to go through credentialing one time. So it's an administrative efficiency. If a PIHP is using a certified credentialing verification organization, the work that's done by that CVO is acceptable for the universal credentialing. So you don't, you wouldn't have to go through the process that the state is employing for universal credentialing. So it's a benefit to the organization.
You beat me to the next question, which is, does it have anything to do with the state's effort to go universal credentialing? So and I think, I don't think that's NCQA, but I think that's the AQH. But I think there's reciprocity.
Yeah, there was a public act that, from Public Act 282 in 2020 that required that there be a process in place for universal credentialing. So the state is a little bit behind in implementing it, but they are moving rapidly towards that.
Any other questions, Mr. Young?
So just to clarify, the next year contract amount is what we're approving, right? And because it goes over $100,000, that's why it's here?
Correct.
It's 19.5 per year? Okay, right?
It's $111,000 for fiscal year '23.
Okay, so then, I'm not reading this right because it says FY '22, 91.5, FY '23, 19.5 for a total of 111.
For fiscal year '22, the contract amount was 91.5. For fiscal year '23, it's 111, and that's due to the expanding of additional providers, the cost increase.
Okay, so that's right, but this is not.
Yeah, I I then I think, you're looking at the form?
I'm looking at the form.
Yeah, I think the form, the form, I don't think the form is correct.
Unless are you paying some in September and then some, look at the finance people in the back. I mean, the amount's the same, but I'm trying to understand, is this like a payment now? And then a payment next fiscal year, what? Or is it one payment of one eleven?
It's the total contract amount for the year would be uh, one eleven. And they would invoice us as um, services are provided, but that's the total amount.
Okay, so it crosses two fiscal years.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I, okay, thanks for the clarification. Anyone else? I have one question. Are you satisfied with their services?
I, we still have some uh, smoothing that we have to do, um, but overall, I'm satisfied. I was really satisfied with how the files that Medversant prepared were able to uh, pass through NCQA. So that is a major selling point. But the organization itself is very um, flexible and agreeable to any uh, changes that we request as long as we remain within the parameters of what NCQA requires.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? There being none, uh, members of the committee, we would need a recommendation for uh, moving this to the board for the uh, one-year extension of the uh, Medversant Technologies contract.
I'll move to recommend.
A motion?
Seconded.
Support. Any further discussion? There being none, we'll call for the vote.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then why don't we just get that form updated for the board meeting? Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next we have the CNS Healthcare Anti-Stigma Contract uh, with Christine Burke. That, yes.
I'm accusing myself in this conversation.
So noted for the, in the minutes. Thank you.
Good evening again. I am presenting for board approval the CNS Healthcare Anti-Stigma Team Contract. Just to give the board some brief history, the contract originated about sixteen years ago. It was a grant from OCHN to CNS to help address stigma, which we all know is a barrier for people to get care. The program was so successful, it became part of CNS's program and service contract. Uh, last year, out of, with the recommendation from our chief legal officer, we are now presenting this contract separately for approval. I, on average, prior to the pandemic, and we are picking pace up again, there were approximately eight hundred people who actually saw the presentation. I do know in the upcoming year, there's some revbranding, reprogramming to um, the presentation and with the team's involvement. Malkaya and her team members also support anti-stigma efforts through BEST, which is the Begin Ending Stigma Today. Malkaya sits on our suicide task force, and she also participates in our PR work group so that she can give insight regarding stigma from a person served perspective. We are focusing more, moving into the future. Our plan is to have more presentations with our providers. The contract does include seventy-five percent of presentations being in Oakland County, then twenty-five percent can be in other areas. There is no increase in the contract amount. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Uh, there being none, then uh, members of the committee of? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just want to make a comment just to the board. Um, they've done a fantastic job over at least the twelve years that I've seen the work that they do, so I'm hoping that you guys would recommend this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Members of the committee will need a motion uh, and support in order to move this to the board for a recommendation for approval of the contract.
Motion to recommend the anti-stigma contract to the full board next week.
A motion?
Support.
Supported. Is there any discussion? There being none, we'll call for the vote.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Uh, next we have the uh, BDO contract uh, with Mr. Well, we have a, we have a substitute, Mr. Franklin is not here.
Correct.
Okay. Anya, thank you. And this is for the?
So this is our auditor.
Ever-popular auditor uh, payment.
Yeah. So BDO is our um, auditor. They do both our financial and our single audit. Um, we have been contracting them, with them for the last three years. This is a two-year extension um, uh, for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars additionally. Um, I suspect after this, we will be bidding this out, so that bid would probably happen in fiscal year twenty-four, to be ready for fiscal year twenty-five. Um, so this is just a slight increase, not not significant, just based on, based on time and and salary adjustments. Any other?
Are you satisfied with uh, the services?
Yeah. And from a financial perspective, it, you know, new auditors are like training somebody totally new, especially when it's something that's complicated. So it has been nice to have consistent auditors for three years, because we have a lot of turnover.
Have you had consist, consistency in the staffing from BDO?
Um, some of the higher level staff, yes. Uh, not necessarily all of them, but yes.
Okay, but enough that you're, you're pleased, there's continuity?
Yes.
No, I I recognize changing auditors is a major, major?
Yep.
Um, undertaking, and especially if to make sure that if we did, that they would have the, they've had the knowledge.
Yeah, and our, this is fairly unique.
We don't want to be, we don't want to be the training ground?
Right.
For somebody, okay. So we're going to continue the proposal for two more years?
Two years and then? Yep.
Okay. All right. Uh, board, is there any questions?
So just to clarify, how many years have they done prior?
So they did, they've done the last three years, including fiscal year twenty-one. So we're looking for the next two years, so that would be twenty-three and twenty-four in preparation for having a new contract in place for twenty-five.
So they were done total of five years?
Five, correct.
Thank you. Yep.
Anyone else? Uh, there being no one, uh, committee members will need a motion and support to move the auditor's contract to the full board?
I'll move.
Mr. Furman, we'll, we'll, we'll accept your uh, motion and?
Seconded.
Thank you, and and the support. Uh, is there any discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your pinch hitting. All right. Uh, finally, we have uh, Adam Hamilton with the Relias Learning CMT Contract. We actually have a tag team, we have two? Okay. Welcome.
Uh, thanks for having us. Um, I brought Diana with me here. This has some IT uh, overlap, so she'll help me fill in those gaps. Um, we're requesting a one-year extension of this contract. It's um, it's for the population health management tool that we've been using for several years now. I presented last month on a new tool that we are switching to. We'll need to um, maintain the current tool for a portion of the next fiscal year while we go through the implementation process with the new tool. Um, the, the request is for a one-year extension. We approached Relias to let them know, we're going to be moving on to a new tool. They did give us a couple of options um, for how to go forward, and the option that we think makes the most sense for us is to go with the one-year extension. They did quote us at a price that reflects about nine months' worth of service um, and and access to the software that we're currently getting. So it's at a, at a reduced rate. Um, and I think of of note is that we've, we've been able to use historically and plan to continue to use um, some grant funding to uh, offset some of the costs associated with our population health management software and the services that go along with that. Maintaining the new tool allows us to continue um, some care coordination activities that are important for outcomes for the people we support, helps us um, you know, financially as well, because we can get people connected to the right services, reduce hospitalizations, get people access to preventative care, things like that. Um, and again, it also allows us uh, some timeframe to continue those activities while we go through implementation, training staff on the new tool, and then of course, um, you know, some time to to validate the data in the new tool and make sure that it is, it is working to to our standards and will support us going into the future.
Questions? Thank you. Yes.
So we're making the move to the new platform, which is sort of nice. Um, as part of the existing agreement, will we be able to move data and history and transactions over to the new one?
Yeah, we, we own all of the data, so we'll be able to do that. Actually, the data that's, that, that, that's in the Relias system is fed to them by us, so it's, it's our data that they work with, yeah. And that will be the case going with the new vendor as well.
That was it for me. Anyone else? Are you satisfied with the vendor's work up to this point?
Yeah, Relias has been great to work with. They've been, they've really tried to grow with our needs. Um, as I mentioned last month when I presented on the new tool, the, the big selling feature there is that we, we really need an NCQA uh, validated tool, um, the, the, the metrics that we use um, for NCQA, the HEATIS metrics in particular, um, the new vendor is pre-certified with those, and that really lays the groundwork for us to, to go forward and continue to grow um, and maintain our NCQA accreditation. Relias has been good, they're just not moving in that direction currently. So we think they'll help us bridge the gap for six to nine months, and then um, we'll be able to ramp up use of the new tool then.
Is this a user-friendly system?
Is it user-friendly? Um, there are aspects of it that are user-friendly. They've worked with us extensively to be able to integrate into our EHR, give access to um, staff across the provider network. Um, there are parts of it that have not worked as well as we need to, particularly for some of the, the activities that we're doing here, kind of looking at um, population in aggregate and and metrics associated with, you know, the whole population served, so.
And has the vendor committed to try and improve? Were there some deficiency?
They're, they're going to continue to work with us on the, on the projects that we're working with them, them on, and I think going forward, we'll be better off and things will be quicker, but for now, we'll continue to be able to do the activities that we're currently doing.
Okay. All right. Diana, do you have anything to add?
I think Adam covered everything.
Okay. All right, so we have concurrence by the, the, the leadership that's brought this to uh, before the board. Uh, thank you. Is there anyone that has any questions? There being no one, um, committee members will need a, a motion and a support in order to move this to the full board?
I move to advance the Relias extension to the full board next week.
A motion?
Support.
And a support? Is there any discussion? There being none, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and that concludes the uh, Finance Operations Committee work this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan, for your first day out. You did an excellent job.
All right, thank you.
Now we go on to the Policy Management Committee. The first uh, presentation is with Frances Carly talking about the annual plan.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for the opportunity to present OCHN's annual plan for fiscal year twenty-three tonight. Um, over the past few months, OCHN's leadership and the department directors have been working diligently to address the priorities uh, that were identified in the strategic plan, and then also um, the priorities from the needs assessment and uh, the feedback that we received from stakeholders uh, earlier this year. And so um, you may have seen uh, in the board packet, uh, that the draft plan is included and also a supplemental document. So the supplemental document uh, really outlines, provides all of the detail on the objectives and all of the measures, the lead departments, and all of that detail and how it aligns with the strategic plan and the goals, uh, each goal that we identified for FY twenty-three. Um, so we are excited to present this plan with the board, uh, to the board today. So this slide uh, shows the structure of the strategic and annual goals. You may remember this from previous presentations. Um, and as part of the annual planning process, uh, the FY twenty-three goals were developed to align with the uh, three-year strategic plan, uh, which the board approved last month. And the annual uh, objectives are the measurable activities, uh, which will make it possible to track the progress uh, on the goals throughout the year, and then also show us how we're doing in terms of supporting people who are receiving, receiving services. And so this is just a quick overview of the strategic focus areas for reference. Uh, so we have five strategic focus areas and uh, some corresponding goals uh, that will guide OCHN's priorities over the next three years through FY twenty-five. And they are staffing and retention, quality system of care, administration and service delivery, integrated healthcare, and partnerships advocacy and outreach. Uh, so quickly, uh, an overview, uh, we have uh, at a high level, the annual plan consists of eighteen goals across the five focus areas. Um, and the team really did work uh, to streamline the objectives as much as possible this year. The objectives will be monitored and reported throughout the year to the board, uh, through the quarterly updates, and then also the mid and annual reports. Um, so we were able to streamline from uh, this previous year by considering some of the items that were more internal operations and uh, items that didn't necessarily align with the strategic goals made, but still are important uh, for the department operations, um, and also policies, procedures, and other kind of ongoing information. We're not including that in the plan per se. We are tracking these items, but it's not uh, within this context. So the first uh, focus area is the staffing and retention area, and this is to address worker shortages and identify opportunities to retain current staff, including specifically the direct care workers, the direct support professionals, and the people who are really uh, critical for serving people um, at the, at the personal level, uh, as well as internal OCHN staff. And this is to maintain a workforce that is sufficient to meet the needs in the community. Um, under the, under this focus area, we have identified three goals uh, for this upcoming year. Um, the first is to implement targeted recruitment strategies online, uh, including with the universities and colleges to increase the workforce. Uh, second is to increase the resources to support and retain the existing workforce. And third is to implement a diversity, equity, inclusion work plan to cultivate a workplace culture that fosters a sense of equity, inclusivity, belonging, and pride among employees. A few of the key objectives are shown on this slide. Uh, we do have more objectives, but in the interest of time, um, and uh, just to- We do have more objectives, but in the interest of time, and just to keep the key points at the forefront, I haven't included all of them on the slide. The supplemental document that I spoke of earlier, that is part of the board packet, does include all of those details, however. So, the first objective for staffing and retention, we're increasing internship opportunities directly with colleges and universities, specifically conducting outreach to five-area universities, colleges to establish formal internship opportunities. The second is to monitor the wages for the DCW, DSPs, in order to repair the wage gap between the public and private sector. Third is offering at least six trainings a month to increase knowledge, compliance, and meet license requirements. And fourth is to provide up to six learning opportunities to promote DEI and DEI-related The second focus area, next is the quality system of care, and this is where most of the work and where most of the objectives are. The goal, the primary focus area is to provide a high-quality, comprehensive system of care for all populations and services across the provider network, including crisis, non-crisis services, access, and children's services to meet the choices and needs of people served. The first goal in FY '23 is to expand the crisis response system and develop a plan for comprehensive crisis continuum services. The second item is improving access services. Third is improving and strengthening the provider network. And then fourth is monitoring and improving the HEATIS metrics, and HEATIS is the health effectiveness data and information set.
Frances?
Yes?
I just want to ask, do you want questions held to the end, or did you want to take questions as you go along?
As I go along is fine, if that works.
I had one question about the previous slide, the objective slide, when it talks about training. Are those trainings being offered to OCHN staff or outside agencies? I just wasn't clear who the training is for.
I know that we are expanding DOCHBO to the provider network this year. These specific training opportunities, I believe, will be offered internally, possibly also to the provider network. I will need to check with Trish and get back to you.
Thank you.
Another question?
Hey, Frances. Two questions. One is, how does this FY '23 plan tie to our upcoming strategic plan? Because I would think they'd be in somewhat in alignment.
Yeah. The FY '23 annual plan was created with and also after the strategic plan, so all of the goals that you see in the annual plan align with the focus areas, these five focus areas that I've been discussing, but then also the strategic goals that we worked out for the strategic plan. And the supplemental document and the plan itself does show, is organized, I should say, so that all of the annual goals are directly tied to these focus areas.
Okay. And Marquita knows I'm a data guy, quality data, so my other question is, I know you've got HEATIS measure metrics to improve those, not only here but in a number of places throughout this thing. Are we looking for something material, is it like 5%, 10% of all of the metrics that we use were on select ones, or?
We do have a, within the quality system of care goals, on the following slide, the HEATIS metrics that are identified this year is a 5% improvement on the IET, FUA, and FUH HEATIS measures, also including reduction in racial disparity and health outcomes.
Okay. For other, for, can you, is it possible, explain what IET, FUA, and FUH group measures are?
Yeah, sorry, the acronyms. The IET stands for initiation and engagement of treatment for alcohol or other drug treatment. FUA is follow-up after an emergency department visit for an alcohol or drug-related emergency. And FUH is follow-up after hospitalization.
Thank you.
And I believe Mr. Hubert would like to go back to the previous slide and the training question.
Ms. Newman regarding the training matters. That is actually for staff and retention goals within the organization. So, there are going to be additional DEI and training modules made available to our provider network in '23, but this is just with respect to our organization.
Thank you. Sure. Any other question? Sorry about that, I wasn't using the mic. Not seeing any. Thank you, Frances.
Absolutely. All right, so, moving on to a couple of the objectives for the quality system of care goals. The first is to expand the provider network by 5% to increase choice and access to services to ensure compliance with network adequacy standards to also include service lines. The second item is to expand the access hours of operations to weekends, opening access at the RCC Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. by the end of the first quarter, and this would increase the number of service hours from 60 to 76 per week. The third objective is to develop the interventions to improve outcomes on the HEATIS measures, which we just discussed, to show a 5% improvement. Number four is to collaborate with Oakland County on creating a data sharing system to capture 100% of the individuals who are booked in and out of Oakland County jail, who are receiving OCHN services for re-entry and community programs. And so, you can see that we are making the objectives measurable and tied to the service goals and people served to improve services and to improve that continuity of care. Yes, ma'am?
Just one quick question. The first objective talks about increasing choice. Is that across all populations or just one specific?
Well, it's my understanding that it is across the provider network and all the populations in general. I can check with the PNT group to confirm that and provide.
Thank you, got it, I'll come there.
There you go.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Kim Flowers. Yeah, absolutely. Access and choice for everyone, not just one population. So, when we're looking and taking inventory of, you know, who we're able to provide service for, we always want to, when we're opening the door and expanding the hours and looking at services that we're already providing, we want to be sure that we are providing access for everyone who is in need of the service, so it never be for one specific population.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question for Frances. Thank you, Frances. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. All right, so, the third focus area is administration and service delivery goals. This priority focuses on the business strategies that ensure the effective and efficient management of OCHN to support adequate and efficient delivery of services, including operations, policy implementation, data analytics, IT communications, training, and financial management. So, the three goals for FY '23 are to evaluate service models and increase value-based contracts, partner with other PIHPs to identify administrative efficiencies, and expand technological solutions to improve service delivery and administrative efficiency. So then, within these broader goals, some of the more specific objectives. The first is to expand value-based contracts to include SUD, self-determination, and CCSU services. The second is to implement reciprocity for SUD audits to reduce administrative burden on SUD providers. The third is to implement provider credentialing and management module in ODIN. And the fourth is to evaluate and develop providers' incentives for vocational service models to improve the service delivery for people attending the vogue services. And then, any questions before I move on? Okay. So then, the integrated healthcare focus area reflects OCHN's response to healthcare integration and health and wellness expectations for people served. OCHN's strategies for integrating physical and mental health systems address the needs of the whole person. So, in FY '23, these goals are to improve care coordination within local hospital EDs and urgent care locations to facilitate post-stabilization services, diversions and transitions back to the community. Second, to expand and support integrated health models. And third, develop OCHN-wide plan to identify and improve health disparities and population health outcomes. And fourth is facilitate access to housing resources for individuals served. Fifth is facilitate transportation access across service network. And so, as part of the development of the goals, we really wanted to bring out the focus on transportation, highlight that, and highlight the housing resources and efforts to improve the social determinants of health for these services. So, the objectives, a few of the objectives, anyway, for this broader effort. First is to track the implementation of rights protections for people who are enrolled in the CCBHC model, which is a new model, especially people who are not Medicaid-eligible, just to address any potential gaps in care. And second is analyzing the need for a psychiatric telehealth in emergency departments and urgent cares, and identifying one to three locations to pilot psychiatric telehealth, possibly developing a work group with pilot hospitals to explore the feasibility of telepsychiatry and EDs, and then establish a work project plan. The third is launching the opioid health home, and I think there might be a typo on the slide, it's actually October 1st, 2022, and then increase the enrollment steadily over the course of the first year of operations. Fourth is identify underserved populations at risk for poor health outcomes through data analysis, and then development, develop, implement, and evaluate interventions to improve the outcomes. Fourth is manage the housing placements and updates through O-Link to reduce potential housing vacancies so that we can increase, work together with our community partners to increase utilization of this service and maximize housing for people served. And then finally, establish a transportation authorization for individuals who are served either through their IPS, IPOs, or treatment plan. No questions? Okay. And then finally, to cover the focus area for partnerships advocacy and community outreach, this area focuses on the involvement of people who are served by OCHN in the development, implementation, monitoring, and evaluation of the supports and services they receive. So, key strategic partnerships in the community help OCHN advance advocacy efforts promoting civil rights and the service and support of needs, support needs of people who are served. The FY '23 goals include identity branding campaign for OCHN's leadership role in providing behavioral health in Oakland County, developing and implementing an outreach plan for reaching out consistently to Oakland County's elected representatives, whether that's at the state level or the local level, and then building strategic partnerships with Oakland County officials, community leaders, educational institutions, law enforcement, and other healthcare entities. So, a few of the objectives listed here under this focus area include coordinating OCHN's participation in a minimum of four community events or meetings a month, so that our presence is known and we're connecting with the community consistently, purchasing advertisement space on 10 to 13 billboards throughout Oakland County using service heat maps as a reference. This is part of the educational component, and then conducting outreach on a quarterly schedule to elected representatives so that we can stay connected and be a source of information for them on a regular basis, and be more proactive in terms of our positioning. And fourth, recruiting 10 individuals representing the Gen Z community to serve on a work group, providing, to help OCHN provide service and outreach recommendations to better reach their peers.
Thank you. So, I liked that last bullet about, you know, having a work group of Gen Zs. Do we have an idea of how many peers in that age group we might be trying to onboard? So, not just sit around and talk about the idea of having peers of that age group, but also have more folks engaged actively.
And Christine, I think, will address that one.
I'm sorry, Jonathan, I couldn't hear the whole question. Could you repeat it?
So, the last one is about recruiting 10 individuals in the Gen Z community as a work group to discuss where we should go and what we should do to address them, but I'm wondering, do we also have some from a metrics perspective? How many peers of that age group we're hoping to onboard to actually execute on a peer program?
Youth that we're serving correctly? Okay, that helps me better understand. So, we do, we will engage the Alliance, which they oversee, we contract with them for the coalition, so they have a specific group where peers would be included. Easter Seals also has a youth-led group, and so does OFS. So, we will contact all three. And then, one of the plans we had was to work with the DECA organizations in local high schools, and then Oxford has a youth group that they are leading, and then in Pontiac, there's another group that Pastor Jones leads. So, from a peer perspective, we'll probably engage those three.
Are we looking at something at school board, multiples? Well, I know they have their pockets and, you know, with Oxford, but are we looking at trying to get some number of high school kids to be peers in this kind of space as well?
Yeah, and I think that, once we have, we're waiting for some language on parental permission, and then we'll
some number of high school kids to be peers in this kind of space as well?
Yeah, and I think that, once we have, we're waiting for some language on parental permission, and then we'll start, we've already had some conversations. I really want to let them lead us. So they'll be able to tell us, you know, these are the groups we want to touch base with in our high school, here's how we want to communicate. So I think the real focus initially is for us to let them be empowered and to tell us the best way to communicate, what is the best way to communicate with their peers and engage their peers, and then offer those opportunities. And I really see our role as helping them facilitate and reaching their goals.
Thank you.
You mentioned a few agencies, and I also thought of student leadership services. Did you think, including them too?
Yeah, and the other, with the student leadership, and then also the honors groups. Most people don't realize the high school honors programs are primarily focused, of being engaged in that group, is community engagement. But, thank you, yes.
More questions? Francis. Did an excellent job, thank you, Francis.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have our quarterly team update.
Ms. Newman, this is an approval item for the full board, so can we get approval from your committee?
Sure.
And I actually have a question, I'm sorry. In our board packet, page 59, we have a fiscal year 23 program and budget plan, which I believe is part of the strategic plan presentation, but it's blank, there's no information in there. So is that because we don't have finalized budget information, or was that a mistake? Sorry.
I meant to mention that with the final draft of the report, or the plan, I should say, that will include the way, the recommended budget presentation that finance will provide pending the finalization of the rates, and so we'll work together this week to figure out the best way to present the budget based on, in this report, based on the information that they currently have and what they would like to share with the public at this time.
Do we have any other questions before we take the vote? Hearing none, this is an approval item for next week's board meeting, so I need members from the Policy Committee to advance this forward. I need a motion.
This is Christine, I'll make that motion to take this to the full board.
Thank you. A second?
Support.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, Sheila?
Mm-hmm. Dr. Hans? Ms. Root? Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we have our quarterly team update. First, Adam Hamilton with the clinical practice team.
Hi again. Okay, thank you for having me back. My name's Adam Hamilton, I'm the, one of the directors on the clinical practice team. Under me is a variety of things related to the services that are provided in our system, integrated healthcare. We have a team of clinical analysts who work with some of our providers, developing clinical protocols and practice guidelines, overseeing evidence-based practice implementation. The clinical diagnosticians for autism services are under me, and currently, utilization management is part of what I oversee, although that will probably change in the not-so-distant future. So I'm going to tell you about a couple of the key areas where we were doing a lot of work this fiscal year. The first thing I'm going to talk about is our annual plan goal related to CCBHCs, or Certified Community Payreal Health Clinics. And our team objective related to this was to work with the department, the CCBHC providers, the designated collaborating organizations. This fiscal year, that was common ground, particularly for crisis services, to implement the CCBHC clinics in Oakland County in accordance with all of the CMS regulations for CCBHC demonstration sites. And then, the second goal I'm going to talk about is our suicide prevention goal, and the team objective that I'll cover related to that is to continue our suicide prevention efforts across the OCHN system by monitoring our implementation of the zero-suicide practices, and particularly, we were going to conduct a baseline audit of our clinical pathway for suicide care tool, I should say, protocol, related to supporting individuals who are at risk for suicide. So first, we'll talk about CCBHCs. Starting at the beginning of fiscal year '22, Michigan became a CCBHC demonstration state, and that means that certified providers can operate as CCBHCs and receive the CCBHC Medicaid demonstration funding. In Oakland County, as you probably well know, we have two CCBHCs participating in the demonstration, that's CNS Healthcare and Easter Seals. And prior to fiscal year '22, both of those providers were operating as CCBHCs under a SAMSA grant. So it wasn't until this year that Michigan became a demonstration state, but previously, SAMSA was offering grant dollars to certain organizations who were going to kind of pilot the CCBHC model in, but now we are a demonstration state, and we are able to, in our region, have those providers receive Medicaid funding for the CCBHC services. OCHN has been tasked with a variety of responsibilities related to CCBHC implementation, so that's really what I want to focus on and talk to you about, how the clinical practice team has worked throughout the fiscal year to support Easter Seals and CNS Healthcare in continuing to provide services as CCBHCs. This year, we hired a CCBHC program analyst, that's Monica Sanders, she's on our team, and she reports to me, and this year, she's really been able to partner across teams and with the CCBHCs to help guide the CCBHCs and OCHN through this first year of being a demonstration state. There's key staff from several departments across OCHN that were involved in work groups. Many, many people had to contribute to developing different processes and procedures to support CCBHC operations and to ensure that OCHN was meeting the responsibilities given to us by MDHHS. Some of the examples of these responsibilities and the work that these work groups did internally and in partnership with the CCBHC providers would be developing processes for distributing payments, overseeing the CCBHC member enrollment processes. So this involves doing work in a state system and then developing some processes internally to track member enrollment. Oversight of the grievance process for CCBHCs, collaborating with MDHHS and CCBHCs to apply for and utilize grant funding to supplement costs associated with non-Medicaid CCBHC services. Some ARPA grant funding was leveraged for this purpose. And then, we are monitoring the submission of CCBHC encounters to ensure that those encounters are submitted appropriately so that Medicaid payment can be made when available for CCBHC services and then be distributed. One of the biggest tasks that the clinical practice team is directly responsible for is overseeing, initially developing and then overseeing the processes for enrolling individuals with their CCBHC of choice. When, as I mentioned, when we started this process back at the beginning of fiscal year, CNS and Easter Seals had already been operating as CCBHCs through the SAMSA grant, so that meant there was thousands of enrollees who had not actually been fully enrolled in the process that's necessary with the state so that Medicaid dollars could be drawn down, so there was a backlog of literally thousands that had to be caught up, and we had to develop processes to manage all of this. So that was a huge task at the outset of the fiscal year. We also had to develop some processes for transferring individuals if they wanted to go to a CCBHC in another county where they were moving, for example, disenrolling individuals. And then, of course, we have many, many people served at the CCBHCs who are also eligible for and receiving CMH or OCHN-funded services, so we had to develop some processes to work through this. People will come in through our access team, and they may not have Medicaid at the moment when they come in, so we have to have processes in place so our access team can connect people without Medicaid to CCBHCs, and then if somebody were, for example, to be referred to Easter Seals but then get Medicaid, they have to have a process to refer them back to OCHN access, to be connected with, access for CMH eligibility determination, so they can receive the more expansive array of services that are associated with OCHN, CMH, Medicaid-funded services. So, all of this was part of our fiscal year '22 budget, there was no additional costs to report associated with that. And are there any questions about CCBHC?
Thank you. Just one, well, and a comment. First, the comment, I think it's great that we're launching these various kinds of programs, health homes, health clinics, health anythings, where there's a lot of cohesiveness and integration. I know for this one, because it's a demonstration project, do we have measures or metrics or outcomes that we're going to be collecting data on that will prove the success of the CCBH demonstration?
Yeah, so this is going to be an area of increased focus in fiscal year '23, I believe. I think a lot of the challenges in fiscal year '22 were around building the processes to get people enrolled, get them aligned appropriately in our system so that we could begin to track that data. There is some, there is some data that the CCBHCs are tracking independently. I think we'll see OCHN having an increased role in that going into fiscal year '23 as we have some clarity from the department on what our role will be and how we're going to capture this data to report out on.
Any other questions for Adam? Not hearing any. Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about our suicide prevention goal, and then I'm going to... That's okay. So, the annual plan goal associated with the conversation I'm going to have now is related to suicide prevention, and again, we're going to continue our suicide prevention efforts, and this includes really kind of two main components. We have our zero-suicide philosophy that we've embraced, and we've woven into policy and procedure across the whole organization, and then we have our clinical pathway for suicide care. And again, think of that as kind of best practice, a clinical protocol for supporting individuals who are at risk for suicide. The zero-suicide philosophy was implemented in 2018, and then the clinical pathway in 2020, and both of those things are ongoing, and we'll see those continue in fiscal year '23 as well. So, year-to-date in fiscal year '22, we've had 319 individuals who've been referred to the clinical pathway since 2019, that's, we're creeping up on 1,000 now, 939 total who have been referred to the clinical pathway. The clinical practice team continues to work to refine that clinical pathway protocol to ensure that best practices are used across the provider network for all individuals who present with some risk for suicide. Recently, the focus has, in terms of improvement, has really been on increasing awareness on the importance of the use of best practice for reducing access to lethal means. So there's a few key things that we've done this past fiscal year related to that. We've been working with our IT team recently to make some enhancements to the crisis plan document in our electronic health record, and this would involve creating a separate page specifically for documenting plans around reducing access to lethal means, and then also embedding some prompts and some tips for case managers and clinical staff who might be developing crisis plans with individuals. We're also adding a standalone, separate from the crisis plan, a safety planning document, and this is going to be really available to anybody. It could be, you know, somebody coming in, an access person at OCHN could use this document, somebody at a provider could use this document, the staff who are working on our justice team could use this document, and the safety plan, it's more specific focus than the crisis plan, where the crisis plan, you sort of develop it proactively, maybe at around the same time somebody's going through the person-centered planning process to develop a new IPOs. The safety plan could be developed specific to a crisis they might be in at the moment. So it's kind of got a different, a different focus, but we think this will give providers another tool to help people who are at risk. And then, we've got some staff who are involved in various initiatives locally or at the state level. One of the clinical analysts, Lauren Joslin, and I were able to present at the NAMI Michigan Conference recently. And Lauren, though she's actually unfortunately leaving OCHN for another opportunity related to this work, she has been able to participate in a county-level and a state-level group, in groups that are working on suicide prevention, so we'll seek to have some representation at those groups after Lauren departs. In fiscal year '22, we were able to, you can go ahead and advance the slide if you'd like, we were able to do the audit on our clinical pathway for suicide care, as I mentioned. We called it a baseline audit this year, it's the first time we've ever audited on this tool, and we tend to learn a lot from those baseline audits, they give us information about how the questions are worded, are the questions actually kind of capturing the information that we're seeking. So we got some good information from doing that, we did get, we did get some useful impressions for what's going well, and perhaps some opportunities to see some improvements. Like, 96% of the time, a screening and assessment was completed to identify if a person was at risk for suicide, so we believe that is a good, a good measure of consistent application of a screening and assessment process. 72% of the time, a person was scheduled and attended an appointment with a medical provider within two weeks of referral to being on the clinical pathway. So if somebody's identified as being appropriate to be placed on the clinical pathway, they're connected to a medical provider for follow-up within two weeks, so we think that is really important. And 67% of the time, reducing access to lethal means was discussed, was discussed. So 67% of the time, we think there's some opportunity for improvement there, and we noticed that through the CERC process of reviewing incident reports, that there was probably some things that we could do that would support the provider network in better supporting individuals with regard to reducing access to lethal means. So the improvements I mentioned before were really born out of recognizing this data and then seeing the trend kind of come up in CERC from time to time as well. I think that pretty well covers it, unless there are questions, of course. All of these initiatives were budgeted, there was no additional cost to report this year.
Ms. Woodruff?
I just have one question related to the 319 that were referred this year. What percentage of that was post-hostilization?
That's a great question, I don't have that data. I don't have that data at my fingertips, but I think that would be an interesting thing to track going forward. You know, we're, part of the zero suicide philosophy is really kind of casting a wide net and trying to do that screening piece broadly. So it's conceivable that some of those individuals were post-hospitalization. It's conceivable that they were in various parts of their journey of treatment, though, because of the, the design.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Hamilton? Not hearing any. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Now we have Dr. Poseos with the Justice Initiative update.
So I'm Dr. Poseos. I'm the Chief Medical Officer here at Oakland Community Health Network. Thank you for inviting me this evening. And as part of my duties as Chief Medical Officer, I oversee our Justice Initiative team. And I'd like to give a little bit of a, an overview of our Justice Initiative department. So our mission in Justice Initiative is to improve the outcomes for individuals who encounter the criminal justice system through cross-system collaboration and coordination. And we currently have 13 members of our Justice Initiative team, but that's going to grow to 15 soon. In, well, very soon, we'll be onboarding our third co-responder for the Troy Police Department. And we have an additional staff member, a position for an additional staff member, rather, which is posted for recruitment, and that is for the Mental Health Court Liaison for the 52nd District Court. This evening, I'd like to highlight two of our initiatives, the co-responder initiative and the diversion and treatment court initiative. They both share the same annual plan goal, and that is to increase systems implementation of diversion from initial contact with law enforcement or filed charges and into mental health and behavioral health supports. Next slide, please. So what and why is the co-responder initiative? So, the co-responder initiative is to expand OCHN-embedded clinicians with partner agencies to provide co-response and follow-up for citizens who are experiencing a mental health or behavioral health crisis. How are we doing this? Well, we're doing this through community commitment to fund physicians and/or grant applications to expand current initiatives. So in terms of a timeline of our co-responder initiative, back in June, we began working with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office to reach two communities, Pontiac and Rochester Hills. And again, our clinician with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office began in June of this past year. As I stated previously, we have a candidate selective, selected, rather, and pending background check. Their anticipated start date with the Troy Police Department is this month. The three police departments that we began our co-responder initiative with, Auburn Hills, Birmingham, and Bloomfield Township, the onboarding process for a second clinician co-responder will begin following the confirmation of a grant. And we're looking to expand further into the community of Rochester. The impact and outcomes of the co-responder initiative is to expand connections to support and services, create more positive interactions with officers, improve systems navigation, and so on. The city of Rochester will use some of the funding to develop a co-responder program. And the status of this annual plan goal with respect to the co-responder initiative is Next slide, please. Again, the same annual plan goal, increased systems implementation of diversion from initial contact with law enforcement or filed charges and into mental health and behavioral health supports. The what and why of this initiative, we are looking to establish a partnership with the prosecutor's office to divert children and adults into treatment whenever possible. And we're participating in a work group with the Circuit Court Family Division to develop a juvenile mental health court. We signed an inter-local agreement with the prosecutor's office to embed a clinician to complete screening tools and connect to treatment. And this clinician was embedded in July of 2022. A juvenile mental health court work group has concluded, a grant application has been submitted, and a court liaison will be embedded in October of 2022, pending approval of funding through the State Court Administrative Office. And my understanding is that a decision on that funding is going to happen sometime this week, so please keep your fingers crossed. This initiative is an ongoing initiative, and the impact and outcome is to offer connection to community, community-based behavioral health services, avoiding potential interaction with the justice system or assisting in diversion efforts. And the status of this annual plan goal is also completed. With respect to our funding sources, we received funding through grants, participating cities and counties, I'm sorry, and the county, general funds and SUD funding. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions for Dr. Poseos?
I see one hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you send out information to different cities and townships to see if they'd like to participate, or is this an initiative that has to be brought forth by the municipality?
My understanding is that the initiatives that we have begun so far have been through kind of networking relationships. I, and I think everybody on the Justice Initiative team, as well as our leadership, our executive leadership, is really interested in expanding our co-responder program to as many communities that we can. However, this being a new, new program, we really want to make sure that we get things right before we expand too quickly. But, but yes, this is something that, that there's a lot of interest in, obviously, and a lot of interest in, in OCHN helping to facilitate a county-wide approach to police co-responding. You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one. I noticed that you said that the, that the objectives have been completed, but it still seemed like it was work listed that hadn't been done yet. It was a little confusing to me.
Well, there, both of these initiatives, there is certainly going to be ongoing work.
Okay.
But in terms of getting these initiatives started, they have both been completed. But yes, of course, there's more work to do in terms of expanding our co-responder initiative as well as our diversion and treatment court. Thank you.
Did you have another? Or was that all for you?
Oh, that's all I have.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I didn't want to cut you off like I did. Thank you so much. Now, the strategic plan update for SUD. Ms. Christie coming before us, I think, for the first time.
Hello? Yes. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. My report is a little bit different, unlike Adam and Dr. Poseos that provided a quarterly update. For SUD, Ms. Carly talked about our entire strategic plan for OCHN. In addition to that, MDHHS requires that SUD have a separate three-year plan. So even though we have some, some goals and objectives that are integrated into the overall organizational plan, this is the report on year two of our three-year plan. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Again, I'm Christie Schmiggy. Yes, this is my first time doing this, and I am looking forward to jumping in. So first, I want to report on our prevention objectives for this past year. And yes, so the first one was to establish new prevention contracts with, for programming based on some priority issues. So what had happened in the fall of 2020, we hired a needs assessment through, a needs assessment consultant through an RFP, and some priority areas were identified for our focus, both areas of some populations and geographic areas to address. So the first one was use and misuse of stimulants in 12 and above youth and adults, accidental overdose in individuals 18 and above, co-occurring mental health and substance use disorders in individuals 12 and above plus adults, underage drinking from 12 to 20, and also adult binge drinking, 21-plus, and then tobacco and nicotine use and misuse from the age of 12 and up. And there were some specific geographic areas that were identified as well. So as you can see, we did complete this objective, and we were able to increase our providers, which was the goal, to cover those priority areas that I just described. We were able to increase from eight to 11 providers, and now we have 22 coalitions covering the county. The three, or I'm sorry, the four areas, we actually lost a provider, so we added four. We didn't, we're still covering the same areas, but we switched providers is a better way of saying that. But the schools that we're able to cover now that we hadn't in the past are Hazel Park Schools, Huron Valley, Ferndale and Oak Park, and South Lion Community Schools. The next objective that we also completed was to implement a survey and data tool to collect countywide data. And we did that in two ways, as identified. The Michigan Prevention Data System is something that MDHHS provides, and we have been able to assure that all providers are trained and entering their information in that system, which helps us track the outputs that are required through their contracts. And then in addition to that, the majority of our providers provide the Botman Life Skills evidence-based curriculum. And we worked with our IT department to develop an internal report using our Power BI instrument that they had introduced. And this enables us to have two different tracking mechanisms and methods. So in addition to using the state data system, we have that internal process as well. There's two prevention goals that are ongoing. We also had developed a prevention provider success survey. This has been developed by staff, and we will distribute it at the end of this fiscal year, so very soon. And this will help us to determine the progress areas for improvement and our focus moving Finalized sustainability plan for prevention services funded by SOAR grants. Now, this had been put in because the state opioid response grants, which is what SOAR stands for, there was a SOAR I that was replaced by SOAR II. And so to sustain it, we thought we were going to have to come up with other funding, perhaps PA II, but the feds gave the state SOAR III. So at this point, we are able to continue with that funding for two additional years. So the reason we called it ongoing is because we still are going to have to be on that, presuming that there won't be a SOAR IV. We still will need to find a way to sustain that programming. And to just give you some ideas of the kind of programming, I mentioned Botman Life Skills. There are other evidence-based curricula that we use, that we fund with this funding, the Prime for Life Curriculum, Guiding Good Choices, these are all youth-focused, and Strengthening Families. But we are also adding an additional evidence-based curriculum with SOAR III, and that is something that's called WISE, and it targets seniors. So that's something that we're excited about because we haven't had a lot of programming that has focused on that population. The other thing that SOAR III is allowing us to do is continue a focus on naloxone distribution and education, and also purchasing additional nalox lock boxes, naloxone lock boxes and vending machines. And we're focusing specifically, again, on further reaches of the county that haven't had the opportunity to have more of those, those boxes and vending machines available. We are collaborating with the County Health Division because they have had some funding for that as well, and we want to make sure that we are not duplicating, that we're leveraging funds as, as effectively as we can. So moving on to treatment and recovery services, one of our goals was to increase recovery housing and to eliminate waiting lists. And unfortunately, we do still have waiting lists for recovery housing. It's a really important service in our SUD continuum of care because often individuals that are just getting a foothold in their recovery need a safe, drug-free place to live. And these are residences that are peer-focused, where individuals can get a lot of help from other folks that have already gotten a foothold in their recovery. And so SOAR funding, SOAR III is specifically going to allow us for the next two years to focus on this goal more specifically. So we're really happy about that. The next goal, there was a specific objective for jail-based alcohol use of disorder medication-assisted treatment. We did implement medication-assisted treatment for those with opioid use disorders, but we have not been able to focus on distributing VIVITROL at this point. It was initially put on hold because of COVID and the pandemic. And when the jail reopened MAT services, or MAT services, we are focusing again on opioid use disorders. But the other thing we have working, been working in a targeted way with them, they decided that they have a... they decided that they have a real need to focus also on out-county individuals. And it had to do with some legal issues for them. So we are helping them facilitate with their opioid settlement dollars the ability to see not only Oakland County residents, but also individuals from other counties. So we've been helping to facilitate through an inter-local agreement, them using our provider to do that. Again, this is really the same story with finalizing Sustainability Plan for Treatment Services Funded by the SOAR Grant. Again, SOAR III has replaced SOAR II, so we have two additional years of funding. But then we'll be focusing on sustaining it beyond that point. So the last slide. We had wanted to focus on increasing ESPT, which stands for Screening Brief Intervention and Referral to Treatment Services, and healthcare integration efforts. So ESPT, we had a staff, we had a couple of projects, and one Dr. Posios actually referenced. We are funding a liaison to the prosecutor's office to provide screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment. So that has been very effective. We had a staff person that was an OCHN employee providing Project Assert, which is just a version of ESPT that had been developed by, I believe it was Boston University. So they have a slightly different acronym, but it's a very, very similar service utilizing peers primarily to help to do universal screening in a healthcare setting to identify individuals that may need a referral to treatment for an intervention to get them to some services. So we, through SOAR III, we've been able to identify more of this funding, and we are looking at filling three positions now. There are three additional positions. The staff person that we had at Honor Community Health moved to a different OCHN position, so that one is vacant. We also updated the job description, and it either just got posted or is about to. So we'll be able to continue those services. The increase in ancillary services such as yoga and meditation, that was something, I mean, those, there are services that are in place. They had been put on hold because of COVID. And providers that were doing it have started, not in-person, but they're doing more virtual yoga and meditation classes. But we weren't able to expand it beyond the providers who are already facilitating that due to the RFP that we had hoped to launch this last fiscal year being put on hold. So hopefully, we will be able to expand those services soon. Research and began implementation, planning for opioid health home. We did, if, for those of you that have been a part of this board for a while, we did last year in April implement an SUD health home. The decision that had been made previously was instead of doing an opioid health home, which is what predominantly across the state and other PIHPs had been created, the decision was rather than just focusing on individuals with opioid use disorders, rather than just focusing on people that have Medicaid, we had decided to offer the health home service to individuals with any diagnosis, any SUD diagnosis and any source of funds. So that's what we started in April. It got a bit of a slow start. There were some barriers. I mean, you've heard other of my colleagues mention workforce-related issues. That was a big one. So we have had, we have four providers right now for SUD health home, Easter Seals, Sacred Heart, Meridian, and OFS. And between the four of them, we have 15 individuals now in our SUD health home. I know it doesn't sound like much, but we're pretty excited about it because it's, I guess, it's been a slow process. As of October 1st, the department decided that even though they had given us the leverage to be more expansive with our SUD health home, that they still want us to specifically provide the opioid health home, in which Ms. Carly covered that as well. So we will be starting that October 1st. Those same four providers will be participating, plus therapeutics, one of our MAT providers. So we're looking forward to that. We have been working with the state, with MDHHS, getting the providers online. There's various trainings that they sponsor and so forth. And we've been working internally with other OCHN departments to assure that we're ready for that launch. So lastly, further development of diversity, equity, and inclusion projects. This is something that is ongoing. We, there's an overall goal, and I think someone else mentioned it, to have providers be able to access this type of training through our training system, Dochebo. People pronounce it different ways, Dochebo, Dosabo. So that is an overall goal. But we also, with a different source of funds, not the SOAR funding, ARPA funds, American Rescue Act plan, we have a three-year grant that we will have the ability to specifically focus on reducing racial disparities in our SUD network, and specifically for access to care. So we're going to issue an RFP, and, but we've been spending a lot of time because what's become clear to us is that a lot of funders, and therefore, a lot of organizations, have resources coming in for that same type of programming. And we want to make sure, again, that we're leveraging resources, that we're not duplicating other things that are going on out there. So we've been spending time trying to learn what else is going on so that we have the best project that we can moving forward. And I think that's it. Do you have any questions?
Oh, Ms. Woodruff, I'm sorry.
Hi, Kristy.
Hi.
I was wondering, where is the opioid home, health home located?
Well, that's one of the things to describe. The opioid health home is not a location. It's not a place.
Okay.
The health home programming, and we, OCHN launched behavioral health home programming, I think, a couple of years ago. That's, Adam could state that more specifically. But health home programming is really, and this is something that the state always emphasizes, it's care coordination programming. So basically, what it allows our providers to do is continue the therapy services, the groups, peer services, things that they were already doing, and bill us for those. But this way, they can also receive a per-member-per-month payment if they make sure that they have some care coordination staff in place, a nurse, peers, or case manager to help make sure that they're connecting individuals with physical healthcare providers. So it's an emphasis on integrated care.
So it's like an enhanced level of care?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Kristy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have, I was just curious. Is cannabis included in this project, especially among children under the age of 20?
Yes.
Children and adolescents?
Yes, the prevention programming that, the curricula that we have our providers use. I mean, does a tobacco, any kind of smoked product? So yes, anything that is a mind-altering substance is included.
I'm wondering if you can tell me approximately how many individuals are on the waiting list for the recovery housing?
You know, I asked, I knew somebody would ask that. But unfortunately, my staff person, who is kind of our data guy, was already gone.
Sure.
So I apologize, but I'll get you that information.
Okay. Thank you.
I think you answered mine before when you said anything smoked, so that would include vaping?
Yes.
As well?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Not hearing any more questions? Thank you.
All right.
Very good job.
Thank you so much.
Very good job, first time out. Now we're moving on to other business. Christine?
Hello again.
Hello.
As I've said the last couple of meetings, September is our busiest month of the year. We are halfway through, and we are still standing and smiling, so that is all good news. Coming up most recently, or in a few days, is going to be Walk a Mile, which is in Lansing. I've said before, we make up about 75% of the volunteers who make that event happen. We're expanding about 2,000 people again. So our team usually helps with the walk. Chris Gray and IT lead that. They actually walk around the Capitol. We help facilitate the actual presentation. We draft the statements, and we coordinate the flag presentation. So maybe 20 or 30 of us from our staff are there to volunteer, and we usually have between 200 and 300 people we serve in attendance. So we're very excited to see some of those things getting back to normal. I'm just going to touch base on some of the high-level events that we have going on, and then if you have questions about the others listed, I will answer those. We have a couple of coalition presentations going on with the schools. I'm just thrilled about our school mental health navigators. I think we're getting more requests now than ever before for community presentations in 10 years I've been here. And they have really stepped up to be in the community, to answer questions, and to share information about what they do specifically, but overall about our agency. So that can only help to strengthen our relationship, especially with our schools. Other events that are coming up, the recovery celebration is going to be here, September 22nd. The state recovery celebration was this weekend, so our SUD team was at that event downtown. We're expecting more than 300 people. It is in our parking lot. It's a lot of fun. We have games. We have guest speakers. We have food. It's really nice to be engaged with the people we serve who are in recovery. And our staff, again, leads the walk. We walk about a mile. We walk to Long Lake. We walk back. So we usually have 20 or 30 of our staff who volunteer for that as well. We have the NAMI Walk. We will have a team there this year. The walk is going to be at Wayne State. So if you want to join our team, we have, we can make sure that you get that link. Something new that came up last week was a program for adverse childhood experiences training. And the department connected with the local organization, the Institute of Trauma and Economic Justice. They didn't have a lot of time to plan, so they thought we could pull it off. So they called us and said, can you help? And we are going to help with that. I will get more information. We just literally found out about it last week. We finished the flyer on Friday, and we were working today to confirm some information to get that out. We're looking at partners and who we're going to be working with. The other thing, at the end of the month, we will also be hosting or co-hosting the Suicide Prevention Community Forum, which we have been hosting now for, I want to say about 10 years. This might be our 10th event, so that will happen here. And I'll make sure that you get that flyer, more information about that. In regard to press releases, media coverage, I think the more we are talking to the community, the more we present. We are establishing a stronger credibility as an expert in behavioral health and for resources for individuals with developmental disabilities, and of course, for individuals living with substance use disorders. We do get interview requests, maybe two or three a month, which does not sound like a lot. But in regard to normally, you might get one every two months, one a quarter. So I am seeing an increase in people coming to us. There was the Ask the Messenger interview link that I believe I shared with the board. The Detroit News contacted us to participate in a story about caregivers. The other thing I wanted to talk to the board about was we have created, Dana had asked us to create a document similar to the one we gave you that lists every program. We created one that is very specific to youth and family. So that is complete now. We're getting ready. I just was working with access. They sent me a list today to have, in addition to our FAQ that's on the website, some questions that would be very specific to families. Once we get some of that finalized, I'll make sure that you have all of that information as well. I do know that, Makia, you had asked about the other document, connecting the providers. And we're working on that. I wanted to wait until the contracts were all signed. I didn't want to have a short life of the document. So we have it laid out, but once everything is signed with our contracts, then we'll make that document available to you. So I didn't forget, and just, it was such a close time. The last thing I wanted to address with the board was the article in the Detroit Free Press about the Office of Recipient Rights. Just to give you a little bit of history, the article, the reporter Jennifer Dixon, actually started writing that article about a year and a half ago. It was the first time that we were contacted. It is not specific to Oakland County. It is about the entire state. It addressed MDHHS, other PIHPs. Some of the things, I think, most noted for me when we were looking at the article and discussing it, that I really think is important for the community and board to understand is while there are always areas of improvement, something they didn't mention was we are the only system that even has a recipient rights. There, if, if this becomes a conversation in the privatization discussion, the private health plans have no safety net like this in place to protect recipients' rights. And that was left out of the article. The other thing I think is people need to understand is recipient rights investigators are not law enforcement. So when an incident rises to the level where it might be a criminal implication, law enforcement has to come in. It may look like we are stepping out, but we do have to let the experts do their job, and we are not the police. The last thing that I want to mention in regard to recipient rights is that we do participate. We are transparent. But because of HIPAA, we cannot confirm or deny whether it's in the newspaper or not. That is not our role. And so we simply will talk about scenarios. We'll talk about protocols and policies and to make sure that they understand how we operate as an organization. We work with our legal team very closely, and we are transparent and cooperative in regard to the FOIOS. And I know Dr. Posios and I talked a little bit too about our recipient rights team and really the work they do, and I believe he wanted to add some comments.
So, you know, as, in my role as Chief Medical Officer, I'm often asked to review recipient rights cases. And I have to say that, also as a forensic psychiatrist, somebody who is accustomed to both writing and reading very detailed reports that require very specific information, information that supports an opinion, information or reports that list, you know, sources of information in a very organized fashion. I have been extremely impressed by the reports that the Recipient Rights Office produced. Again, in terms of delineating sources of information, having exhaustive summaries of corroborating information, and very clearly citing where those pieces of information come from and put together to support whatever opinion it is that they arrive at. So I just wanted to say that because those kind of things don't often get talked about. But from my perspective, I, again, I've been extremely impressed with their work, and I just thought- and I just thought that people should know about it.
Do we have any questions either for Christine or Dr. Poseo? Not seen.
I just have a comment, Dr. Poseo. I'm going to take that praise that you gave back to the Recipients' Rights Committee, if that's okay. They'll love to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, is Vicki here? Is someone stepping in for her for recipient rights?
I can own that one, I think. I think she thinks she's presenting at the board.
Okay.
So we can, if you don't mind, amend the agenda to have that move forward to the board for approval?
Okay.
To the board meeting? I think that's on me. Sorry.
Okay. Ms. Edna?
Good evening, everyone. You've seen me here before. It was late last year when I asked the board to complete the MDHHS Provider Information Screening Tool Disclosure Form. And some of those who are newer to the board, when you join the board in the spring, I requested that you also complete this form. This is a disclosure form that's required for our contract with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And it requires that certain officers of OCHN and all of the board members disclose their relationships or any potential conflicts. So I have the document in written format for those of you who would like to read through it and actually do a hard copy. And I have an electronic copy of it queued up and docu-signed for those of you who would prefer to complete the document electronically. In either case, I would need to have the form back by the end of the week so that we can send it to MDHHS next week as they require. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Not hearing any.
All right, I will disclose the form. I did provide a cover sheet with instructions for those of you who may be newer to the document that directs you which page numbers apply to the OCHN board members.
You passing those out tonight? Okay. Next, we have our second opportunity for public comment.
Thank you.
I have some things to be handed out here. Let me hand those. I won't hand them all. This is about the Free Press articles, one yesterday, one today. There are two different. I have two copies, which I give to the CEO and your board leader, board chair. And you can get these, probably can't buy the copies, these copies anymore, but you can get them online. And the two pages that I handed out give you the network addresses. You can't get them for free. It costs you a buck unless you're a Free Press subscriber.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cummings. Is it possible for you to remove your mask while you're talking?
Sure.
I can't understand you.
You can't get these, you can get these online if you're a subscriber to Free Press. If you're not a subscriber, right now, it costs you a buck for six months' subscription to get them online. And that's the web address that's on those two sheets. The focus of these articles is on recipient rights. And I think that certainly families and others that are familiar with the MHLA system as dependents or families and dependents are concerned about recipient rights. And I don't want you to undervalue these records or these reports. The general feeling amongst families in particular is it doesn't make any sense to make recipient rights because it doesn't pay off. Basically, our personal experience tends to be you submit a recipient's complaint and usually is rejected, is not relevant or unsubstantiated. If it does occasionally get substantiated, then it becomes something that gets some casual response from the providers. And usually, it's the direct care providers, workers, who get blamed for everything, even though there's really systemic problems. So this is a fundamental problem. But more importantly, the fundamental problem with the system and recipient rights is accountability. And I think you have some words in here about the Fox, regarding the announce, that recipient rights should not be reporting to CMHS. Should be reporting to an independent agency that is overseeing the system as a whole. And that independent agency should not be just overseeing CMHS. It should be overseeing the departments and the legislature, which is the core of many of the serious problems. The legislators are responsible for funding, which is totally inadequate. And the department basically keeps the lid on of what, how much problem there is and what needs to be done. So we need to be looking at a system which really does the whole job. First of all, the system right today is basically driven by budget, not need. The budget is do as little as possible. And the fact that the budget is inadequate drives the whole system to limit what can be done, what should be done, and eventually cause problems which show up as recipient rights. So this is the tip of the iceberg. Today, basically, we're funding, what do you call, custodial service, food and shelter and medications. It doesn't get people well, it just kind of keeps them out of trouble. And unfortunately, they don't get here unless they get in trouble in the first place. And that's a big problem. We're hardly doing anything for children. Children is an increasing problem. And we need to be doing a lot more there. We also need to be doing something for an estimated a hundred thousand people who are out there in the community across the state and aren't getting anything because they haven't become a serious problem yet. And some of them won't become a serious problem. Well, that's asked. So just want to draw your attention. This is a copy of the Sunday article. It's fifty-three pages off the internet. So if you don't, can't get a copy, pay your buck and get a copy. Thank you. Thanks.
I'm sorry. Next, we have board member comments? Do we have any board member comments tonight? Christina?
I just want to thank everyone. I always feel so bad when we stay late and we work such a long day, but thank you for being here and all the information you presented to us. And this is random, but I'm sure I'm not the only one who thinks this room is freezing. I don't know if it's possible to increase the temperature, but please do so or you're going to see me in fuzzy socks and gloves next week.
Anyone else? Oh, Adam, thank you.
I just wanted to echo what Christina was saying. Not only the individuals making the presentations tonight, but the individuals helping to prepare the presentations as well. Thank you for all the time put into that. It's very much appreciated. Have a good night.
So I just want to take a moment and thank the staff that put the presentations together along with the rest of the staff and the workings behind the scenes, as well as our field staff and our folks out in the field that work directly with the folks we serve. It's a tough job. I recognize that. I'm glad that you guys are doing it. You're part of the mission. It's a tough thing. In the next couple of weeks, we are going to be, you know, approving the budget for the coming year. We hope that it goes well. And along with the three-year strategic plan and the annual plan. So I think our organization is in a really well, in a very strong position to continue its mission, its ability to be agile and to shift gears to meet the needs of the folks, not only those that we serve, but the citizens across the county when they've had needs pop up, as we've seen in this past year. So I just want to thank everyone, staff as well as those that work with us. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Hearing none. The meeting is adjourned.